Hello, this is the Glendale City Council Special Workshop of September the 25th, 2012. The meeting is called to order. Mr. Skeet, would you please introduce our item?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. This afternoon, we are continuing the discussion about the potential budget impact that we are likely to be faced if the sales tax initiative is successful at the November elections. I started this process about two weeks ago where I presented you a series of alternatives and different scenarios that we're confronting in the city at that time. Today, basically, is one of the things that I've asked the staff to do while I was making that presentation was to begin to contemplate and begin to show, put together a document and a presentation to show what would happen if the sales tax is approved, if the sales tax is not approved, if the Coyotes deal was renegotiated, and if the refinancing of the outstanding debt was possible. So, we presented, basically, three scenarios. There's certainly other alternatives that could have been considered, but the net results of all the other combinations of alternatives really came out to be about the same thing. We have those three scenarios outlined on the slide today in front of you, and the most optimistic outcome would result in at least a $6 million budget reduction, and any of the other combinations of outcomes really adds up to approximately $25 million in cuts. Staff, like I said, over the last two weeks, we're working together to put together what that would look like for you. What we have today for presentation is a summary of the effort that staff put together and documented, and that summary adds up to about $20 million in cuts. Not the 25 that we're showing as the ultimate worst-case scenario, but $20 million worth of cuts. Staff is going to pre-- one of the things I did, in an effort to make sure that we communicated effectively to you, what was possible and what would happen in this scenario is, and to speed the input, the information to you, and allow for you to have input and conversation among yourselves and with us as we continue to go forward with this exercise. I grouped the staff, I grouped the departments into four groups, as well as the elected and appointed officials. You are going to see those presentations done in that category, in those groupings. The overall impact of this staffing levels are going to be demonstrated and highlighted on a slide. In addition to that, you're going to see the number of cuts of employees possible should we have to implement their situation, and also a high-level summary of the service reductions that are going to be impacted, and that the community is going to see as a result of these cuts. You will given a little more detailed explanations of those areas. What I'm attempting to do today is to encourage that we allow for the presentations to be had by these divisions, those four or five clusters of departments, and then entertain any comments on the details from that group, and we can systematically move through the entire organization as we make this presentation this afternoon. So, with that in my--
I'm sorry, did you ask that the questions come after each group, or wait till we've heard the whole city and then do the questions and comments?
Mayor, I think it's probably more appropriate that the questions come after each group.
After each group.
Because we--
Okay.
We could be sitting here listening to staff for an hour and a half or so before we can get to questions, and I don't think that would be appropriate.
I just wasn't sure what I--
So, after each group probably is the most appropriate place.
Thank you.
With that in mind, I just wanted to also review a couple of the other things that have been done and to put this in perspective. We have been faced with this situation like the rest of the country and the rest of the state for probably around 2009. Over the last, so for the last three years or so, we have systematically made some reductions to the operating budgets over the course of those three years. And I wanted to take an opportunity to kind of put this in perspective for you and talk about those cuts. As you can see from the slide, we have had about 25 percent cuts in the operating budgets over the last three years, since 2009, for about, an equivalent of about $40 million. That translated into about, into a reduction of about 300 employees delivering the services to this community, and 23 million, and 22 percent, sorry. At the beginning of this, immediately after we adopted this year's budget, we went through an exercise where we, and also adopted the seven-tenths of a sales tax increase in sales tax, we entertained an idea and went through an exercise that exempt single purchase items of greater than $5,000 from that seven-tenths increase. That resulted in a, in an estimated $1.1 million in revenue loss to the city's budget. To respond to that loss, we also, at that time, asked staff to put together a reduction, an initial reductions of where are we going to take that $1.1 million worth of expenses out of the budget. That $1.1 million of expenditure reduction that was done in June of this year to reflect the change in the sales tax structure resulted in the reduction of five and a quarter full-time And I think it's important that we point that out for one particular reason. As we were putting together these budget cuts, there was some confusion as to which budgets we should be using to demonstrate and use to calculate the $20 million cuts. The budget document that was used was the original adopted budget, so those five, five-and-a-quarter employees and that $1.1 million was not reflected in your baseline budget reduction numbers here. However, the confusion really showed up in the document as we went forward because those cuts were shown as taken out of the budgets in some places in very specific fashions, however, in other places, they weren't accurately or easily accessible and definable in the document. So, for example, the mayor's budget reads that you had four employees in your office at the adoption of the budget. During the reduction, during that $1.1 million reduction in expenditures, we took one employee away from your, from your office at that point, that we happened to have had a vacancy at that point, and we immediately made the decision not to fill that vacancy, removing that from your, from your budget and from your operations. However, in the document, it still shows four employees on, four employees in the mayor's office, because we used the budget, adopted budget, the week before in the calculations of this. The other areas, the Communication Department, Economic and Community Development Group, the Neighborhood Services, and Parks and Rec, and the court also has that similar situation highlighted in the document that you have before you and the document posted online. So, I just wanted to put that in perspective because in addition to the $20 million of cuts demonstrated in this document, those major departments, those five departments that I've highlighted, and a few others that also had a million, $1.1 million worth of cuts in that, in that process, that is not accurately reflected in this budget document that is online right now. We'll attempt to, as we go through the remainder of this discussion, and we refine the document, we will attempt to make those corrections as we go through this, and I'm sure there will probably be a few others that we may find because of the haste with which we put this together. So, I wanted to just set the stage and kind of point that out to you from the front, because it makes it a little difficult when you're thinking from an employee perspective or a public perspective, that, you know, I was told the reason why I'm not getting this is because we're down an employee, and that employee, when you look at the document, doesn't seem to be reflected in the document accurately. So, I just wanted to just kind of point that out on the front end of this, so that we can deal, you know, put it in the right perspective as we contemplate the $20 million. So, the $20 million worth of cuts here really is a reflection of 21.1 million worth of cuts from the originally adopted budget, because $1.1 million was already cut and taken out of operations. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Surehammer, who will kind of lead us through and guide us through the grouping of departments as we go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Skeet. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This slide summarizes for you the explanation that Mr. Skeet just provided to you regarding the number of staffing reductions. Beginning in FY09, when we started doing reductions through FY13, you'll see that we decreased FTEs a total of about 22 percent, or just over 300 positions. After the adoption of the 13 budget, there was the $1.1 million in reductions in five-and-a-quarter FTEs associated with the two-tiered sales tax adoption. And then, we also have the 249 FTEs that are identified in the document that's part of the agenda packet. So, what you'll see is that the red bar on the far right for the FY13 amended budget, it includes the 249 that are in the document in front of you, plus the five-and-a-quarter from the $1.1 million in reductions related to the two-tiered sales tax. So, everything is now reflected in that one bar there, and we've identified where the positions are.
Councilmember Lieberman wishes to ask a question.
Thank you. What page do I find that slide?
They didn't give us that. Pardon?
What page do I find that slide?
The slide, the material that we gave you only goes, it covers FY09 through FY13.
So, this is not in any of my literature?
The FY09 to FY13 bar chart of it is, it's on page--
No, the one you just showed, what page is that slide?
This one that's up there, it's not in your book.
Okay, that's what I need to know. As you turn on a slide, please inform us as to what page, so that we can follow with you.
Okay, we can provide this slide for you, this and the other bar chart slides.
I would like it. We have provided it for the audience, I'd like a copy of it.
Mr. Skeet, in the previous slide too, that you were talking, from everything that is shown in the meeting that we have not been given, please get us a copy today, if possible, or tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, members of the council, not only would you have a copy of it, we, at the end of the meeting, we would also post these slides on the website.
And I wanted to go back to the amended budget. Is the amended budget posted on our website, or is the first budget posted? Because once, once the budget was amended, the first budget was no longer accurate because both revenue and expenditures were amended. Is that posted somewhere?
Mayor and council, it would not show up in the annual budget book that's posted, because that, of course, is the adopted budget.
My question is--
No.
But, yes, I think the answer is-- If somebody, if a member of the audience, if an employee, if somebody from, you know, Belgium, whatever, wanted to see what the budget for the city of Glendale is for this fiscal year, is the amended budget, which is, was taken by a formal vote, is that posted anywhere for anybody to see?
Mayor, the document, no, it is not posted in the same fashion as the original budget. The original budget is posted, and the, any amendments, and if we are to track, if you were to try to track that, one would have to go through the various council actions during the course of the year, and identify those actions during the course of the year, and how they impacted the budget, and make your own adjustments. The amended budget has not been posted.
Okay, and I'm not trying to make this difficult. It seems like it would be a very, very simple thing to put a, three sentences that said on such and such a date, "The city council voted to amend the budget which was previously approved on June the 12th. This reduced the revenues by, I guess, $1.1 million," and this reduced expenditures by, and this is the, and you don't have to go through the entire book, but just where the changes were made. The public should see that, and that's my suggestion.
We can certainly do that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, this next slide identifies and repeats what Mr. Skeet had mentioned earlier, that the range we were looking at was six to 25 million, and that today's workshop, it will, we will talk to you about the reductions that are in your packet, which total 20.1 million, and that these are in addition to all the reductions that have been made in the prior years. So, first up is the Community Services Group, and Mr. Kent, Executive Director of the Public Works Department, is going to introduce the group, and then the individual executive directors for each of the departments within the group would be available to answer specific questions about their reductions.
Thank you, Ms. Surehammer. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Starting, the slide that's in your, is on page six of your books, it's up on the screen right now, and it highlights, as Ms. Surehammer started to indicate, the amount of personnel and full-time equivalent position reductions over the past five fiscal years, and what's being proposed as a part of the current fiscal year. The Community Services Group, as Mr. Skeet sort of alluded to, is essentially a combining of a number of departments, and those include Public Works, Parks, Recreation and Libraries, Community and Economic Development, Community Housing and Revitalization, and Communications.
Just as a note, we don't have that slide, so it's not page six--
Oh, I'm sorry.
It may be that other pages are off kilter, too.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, if I may, I think what you have in your book is, is the first five bars of that slide.
Right.
Right, not the last bar.
The sixth bar that reflected, that actually shows what the amendment, the proposed amendments would do, is not in any of your material. That was just created today.
Just today, okay.
So, that's not included in your material.
So, page four has everything but the red bar.
But the red bar.
And Mayor and Council, and Mr. Skeet, we have someone going upstairs to print these slides for you, and they'll bring them down probably within about 10 minutes.
That's great, thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, thank you for the correction. On, starting on page five of the book, lays out the groups sort of in order and the variety of the reductions. I'll summarize them briefly, and as Mr. Skeet and Ms. Surehammer indicated, the department directors are available to answer any questions. The proposed reductions for the five departments total approximately $8.1 million, and include the elimination of approximately 118 full-time positions. Some of the key reductions include closure of the Foothills and Velma Teague Branch Libraries, the Rose Lane Aquatic Center being closed, and three of the Glendale Recreation After-School Program, or GRASP, program sites. Graffiti removal program staffing would be cut in half, and response times could reach up to two weeks. The elimination of KGLN Channel 11, the elimination of all downtown special events, including Glitter and Glow, the Chocolate Affair, and the Jazz and Blues Festival. A reduction in staffing for building safety and code compliance, and corresponding reductions in service in each of those areas, and the elimination of the Downtown Beautification Program. Mayor and Council, that's sort of a very high-level summary of some of the key reductions, but as I mentioned, myself, as well as the rest of the executive directors are available to answer any specific questions on those cuts that are contained from pages five through pages eight. And then, additional detail on those cuts goes through page 12. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kent, this is directed to Mr. Skeet, and all these presentations that we're going to have, I think the, we need perhaps to mention one thing that hasn't been mentioned yet, the Coyotes, the Arena Management Agreement, and how that fits in, because I don't know about the others, because I know I've been getting some emails that, you know, that, where they believe that because of that agreement, that that is the cause of all our problems. And so, I would like for you, if you would just touch on that, as to how this fits in in the whole scheme of things.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. Mayor and Councilmember Martinez, as I indicated in the workshop on September 12, we outlined three different scenarios. In each of those scenarios, or in two of those scenarios, the suggestion and the incorporation of the numbers, as it relates to the Coyotes' management agreement, showed approximately $72 million being renegotiated number that the city would be obligated to pay over the first five years of the, of the Arena Management Agreement, compared to the $95 million that was in the original deal. One scenario pointed out, scenario number two, as I have it listed here, pointed out, if the sales tax goes away, and we are successful in renegotiating the Arena Management Agreement to that $72 million over five years, and the debt, the outstanding debt is restructured, we show, basically, there would still, there would be a need for $25 million reduction in the budget. Scenario number three was, showed a scenario that described, if the sales tax goes away, we are unable to renegotiate a deal with the Coyotes and the Arena Management, the current Arena Management Agreement. We are less likely to, and almost guaranteed, that we would not be able to refinance our outstanding debt with those two major events happening. And that scenario shows that there would be a need for a $24 million reduction in our operating budgets. So, if the sales tax goes away, and we are able to renegotiate the Arena Management Agreement to the numbers I pointed out, $72 million over the first five years, and we are able to, with that scenario in place, and we're able to successfully negotiate the refinancing of the debt, we have to reduce the budget by $25 million. If this Arena Management Agreement that we have, that we approved in June, we are not able to renegotiate that, and we basically have to go, the Coyotes and that disagreement goes away, and we have to basically go out for bids and appoint a new, get a new Arena Management in place. That shows, that still shows, with the sales tax going away, a need for about a $24 million reduction. I have plugged into that scenario an estimated number of $6 million to manage the arena. That $6 million was based on my best guess from information that I was able to collect as far as what it may cost if we were to go out to bids on this. We have not done that, so I do, again, that's just my best guess as far as that's concerned, but including a $6 million management fee for the arena, management expenses for the arena, we still need to cut approximately $24 million if the sales tax goes away.
And that's what, thank you, and that's what I wanted to get out, because I think there's a misconception up there that the Coyotes stay, that, you know, this is the cause of our problem, and even if they leave, we still have a, we still have the deficit, as you pointed out. So, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez.
I think that Councilman Martinez is wrong in his comment that it didn't affect our budget. If you're going to pay $20 million, or even $17 million, when you don't have it, and then lay off employees, I don't think I can accept that, because the Coyotes is a luxury. How much money, Mr. Skeet, has the Coyotes brought us in the past?
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, the Coyotes, the impact of the Coyotes on the city's budget over the last, over the last 10 years, I think, or nine years that they have been here, has been in the vicinity, ranges from between $2 and $5 million worth of direct revenues that I can attribute to activities in the arena.
See, and $2 to $5 million, and here we're going to give, or you were still working on it, for $17 million, and then we're talking about all these employees and services for the actual person that pays taxes, that if we don't have the money, we shouldn't spend it in the Coyotes or legal fees, that we're always trying to protect somebody else from going to court. So, I feel that the Coyotes have a lot to do with this budget. If you give up, because you didn't, you lost quite a bit, so why do we keep on going with the Coyotes if they have not brought us any money?
Mr. Skeet, could I, hello, Mayor?
Mayor.
He would like to answer--
That's a follow-up question.
Yeah, Councilmember Martinez.
Mr. Skeet, would you please restate that again? The Coyotes leave, the Coyotes are gone, you know, but there's, but now we still have to pay, say, $6 million or whatever to some, someone to operate the arena. There's no Coyotes. How much of a deficit are we still faced with?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, if the Coyotes were to leave, if we were to not complete the negotiations or unable to renegotiate the contract with the Coyotes and their Arena Management, if that happens and the sales tax were to pass and go away, we would still have to cut $24 million, at least $24 million, out of the general fund operating budget in order to be able to do that.
And there's no Coyotes anywhere in there?
There would be no Coyotes hockey at the arena.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lieb-- okay.
After him, it's fine.
Councilmember Lieberman.
For the world of me, and I will expand on this, I don't see how we can cut a fire department parade for $100,000 or whatever and pay some guy in between, and I don't have a final figure, $10 million and $17 million to run the hockey arena. We have agreed, basically, on somewhere in between $72 million and $92 million for five years. We have also come up with, with my private talks to you, not an exec session, of $320 million in 21 years. We are stuck with $10 to $11 million a year for debt service on the arena. We're also, a management fee that I accept that you say is $6 million. What we are not taking into account in that $6 million is perhaps somebody that runs the arena and puts more than 20 events on, puts 50 events on, or more, maybe able to make a profit for himself and the city, and although it's an arguable point, we have had a group that won it 26 nights with what I thought was a guarantee of $5 million for the city. I'm not sure of that. It's so convoluted now that I'm not sure of it at all, but I really think that we can do away without Coyotes. The guy, the first deal he offered us for $310 million was June 21st of 2011. Well, that's quite a few months ago, and he hasn't signed yet. I do not believe that we need the Coyotes. I believe that you say 20-odd million. I can see $6 and $12, $18 million of permanent expenses-- I can see $6 and $12, $18 million of permanent expenses. I can also see a profit on that with a good promoter. Now, let's also go to, and the two books are different. The one that you handed to us the other day, 42-page, is quite different than the one that's in our book today. The top of page seven, elimination of special events division and all festivals, I have a hard time with that only. I understand we've gotta cut staff, I understand. And what all you people have to understand is, with or without the Coyotes, with or without the tax, we owe a billion, a billion dollars plus. The present debt on the baseball stadium alone is $441 million, and I have no idea how we're gonna make the payment of $12 to $16 million in January 2017. That payment is $17 million. Yes, we are trying to refinance it. My personal belief is, no bank in their right mind is gonna refinance $441 million on those fields. The solution is, and I mentioned this to Horatio also, give them away, break the contract, let them try and sue us. I don't know what to do, but we have to do something about that $441 million. And we have to figure a way to keep what we are known for, the glimmer, the glitter and glow, the Glow Festival, the Chocolate Affair. Mr. Saretta was on the Channel News last night talking about this very thing, and what the Chocolate Affair does for Saretta's. He's not sure, in his own words, David Saretta, I believe it is, can exist without the Chocolate Affair, which is his one big show over the years. As many of you know, I have worked those affairs year after year for Glendale Civic Pride. I like to pour beer, forgive me, I like to drink beer too, but I pour it at the festivals. And we need those five affairs in downtown Glendale. We need them for the merchants, we need them for the civic pride, we need them to show that we are Glendale, as Mr. Saretta said, and Karen Landis in a letter today, they bring people to Glendale. I don't know that the downtown merchants can exist without them. And in the folder in our blue book, it's the first item on page seven, I don't see it in the 42-page report.
Well, it's on page 10 and 11 is where you will find that, in the new book, the new, the stuff in your book here.
Right here, top of page seven.
I know, if you go into more, I thought you were looking for more detail.
No, elimination of special events division and all festivals.
This is a good segue into discussing the items on pages four through 12. We got a bit of field of all of that. So, right now, we're discussing the Community Services Department, and the items that are on pages four through 12, and any questions you might have. So I'll start off with a question, and that would be on page 11. And the item is transfer of expenses from the general fund to a self-supporting fund for tourism division expenses, including the Glendale Convention and Visitors Bureau. What exactly is that self-supporting fund, and where does it get its money?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Frizoni will respond to that question.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. What that means, Mayor, is when we went through this exercise, as you know, we had about two weeks to put this all together. We met with all the interested parties and the stakeholders. For this one specifically, it's the hoteliers. And the item on the table was the potential loss of the CVB, or revamping it, doing it differently, as well as the visitor center. We met with all the hoteliers, we continue to meet with all the hoteliers, and we have overwhelming support from each one of them to include all the, all the costs that the city currently has, which is staffing and operation and maintenance, that full figure there, to be transferred to the bed tax. And they will become fully self-sufficient, self-funded out of the bed tax. You will hear from them, they're supportive of this, and it was the way for us to keep that service intact.
Well, that's great. I've kinda gotten fooled about the CVB and what it costs in the past, so I'm really zeroing in on it this time. Are the hoteliers aware that if the initiative passes, that increased bed tax goes away?
They are aware, Mayor, they-
And so then how does this happen? Because it only makes about $30,000 a year for the CVB. I had always been told CVB was self-sustaining, and it turned out when we did the budget, it's something like $300,000 a year.
The visitor center and the staffing in the visitor center has always cost about $225,000 a year. When we transferred over to the CVB model, nothing changed, except the fact that we were now bringing in membership dollars, which is that $30,000 you talk about. The hoteliers, Mayor, were not aware that they were included on the sales tax initiative. They were livid about that. No one had spoken to them about it, no one had discussed it.
Okay, I understand that. What is your plan? They are included, all taxes are included, because everything goes back to the way it was prior to whenever those taxes were voted on. So how does this happen then? What, what I thought the exercise was, was to reduce expenses because the tax is gonna go away. So how does this $223,000 get to stay if, what funds it goes away?
Mayor, Mr. Skeet, if I could answer that question. The hoteliers are going to contact you if they have not already. They are going to ask you that if the sales tax in some way goes away, that the bed tax portion remain. You'll recall, they were the ones who suggested that they needed a bed tax to begin with. So this works, Mayor, if the bed tax remains as the funding source for the CVB.
Okay, Ms. Frizoni, I understand. I championed that tax. It's the only one I championed, the only sales tax I supported because a hotelier's contacted me. Yes, I understand the purpose of it, and I understand the good of it. But what you're saying is what we, what others have said, that the voters might vote that they want the initiative to go through and the taxes to be replaced with the previous taxes. So what you're suggesting then is that we would refuse to do that after the voters voted. You can be mad, the hoteliers can be mad, I can be mad that that bed tax is included. The fact of the matter, it is, it is included. So what you're saying here is that if the initiative passes, we will take some, we will refuse to take action to reverse, I don't wanna say reverse, 'cause it's not reverse. Never mind. I get what you're saying.
Mayor, I have a question in regard to this.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
What happened to the $67,000 last year that we supposedly got from Arizona Sports and Tourism for specifically the Convention Bureau?
Mayor, Councilman Lieberman, those are grant funds that we receive every year from the state, through the state, AOT, and every year, those numbers vary as to what we get. Last year, our grant amount from the state was a little more than $67,000. What has to happen with that money is it has to be spent to attract tourism from outside of Maricopa County. So we apply each year, we are in the hopper with every other CVB in the city, in the state, and then we compete for that money. And once we receive it, we use it for advertising and tourism outside of Maricopa County.
If my sources are right, we get $39,000 this year. Does that sound close?
I have not heard that amount yet, Councilman Lieberman.
Yes. Okay, but it has to be used by the Convention Bureau for outside advertising.
Outside of, to attract travelers from outside of Maricopa County.
I think that's great. It helps us get people from out of state and out of county to come to our events. I think that's an excellent expenditure and a good source of income. That income, do you include that income in the $225,000 that we are going to use for Convention Visitor Bureau and other assorted expenses associated with the Convention Bureau?
Mayor.
Did you ask him?
No, I haven't got an answer.
Right.
Did you include that amount in that money?
I'm sorry, Council, did we include the $67,000?
The $39,000 and the $223,000 that you're transferring out of the general fund into the CVB money?
No, Mayor, Councilman Lieberman. The 39, or whatever that figure is, is not general fund dollars from the city, it's grant money from an outside source.
So you did not include-
So we did not include it.
So actually, we have $223,000 plus last year, more than $67,000 to spend.
Through a grant fund, not through city funds.
Doesn't matter, it's money that is to be used for tourism for Glendale. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Frey.
I'm listening to all this money we get and what we don't get. Bottom line is, if we eliminate the positions that you're eliminating, we have no one to implement those grants. We have, the business owners downtown are concerned about festivals being canceled. Mr. Skeet's the same, and telling, or requesting, or more telling the departments, you have to come within a budget. The budget says you have this amount of money. Government, municipal government is a service-oriented organization. Government provides services. We're telling, we're being told that we have to go down to the core services. These aren't festivals, CVB, those aren't core services. So we can sit up here and talk all day about, oh, about this money, oh, the people wanna have this festival, they wanna have that festival. What the citizens are gonna vote on is if, they're gonna be the ones deciding if you wanna have the people to do these jobs. So we could sit up here for hours and talk about numbers, and how much money we receive from a grant, or how this is gonna be funded. Bottom line, people will be, jobs will be eliminated, and it's gonna be eliminated back to core services. And even core services are gonna be eliminated, folks, by seven tenths of one penny. We have people, and I looked up the terminology, they're called carpetbaggers. Carpetbaggers, people from outside your city who get involved in your politics. So you, out here, are being influenced from people from outside your city because they're gonna look out for you. They're not looking out for you, folks. They've said they wanna bankrupt the city of Glendale. They wanna start anew. They do. They don't even live here. That's what I'm upset about. We're gonna go line by line. I look in this room, two-thirds of this room are city employees. There's a third of the people out here, out of that third, half of them, or probably a third of that, are people running for office. We have over 220,000 people in this city. I don't get emails from people saying that what we did with the sales tax was wrong. Are they concerned? Absolutely. I stand behind my vote. I care about this city. I'm willing, I pay tax, I do the same thing. But when you get people over here, getting people riled up, telling my people, telling us what we have to do, and you don't even live here, that's very upsetting. I've been very quiet up to this point, but I'm tired of it. We're the elected officials in the city of Glendale. We don't always agree, but at least we represent the people that voted us in the office. So if you wanna have a fight, you're gonna have a fight, all right. It's gonna be a fight with the citizens of Glendale, because they're not gonna put up with outside influences. So remember, look in Webster's, carpetbaggers. And if you wanna have names, I'll be more than glad to tell you who they are. Certain businesses, after they got what they wanted on a sales tax, now all of a sudden, they're behind, oh, let's do good for the people. Let's help the citizens of Glendale because we're paying too much taxes. Are they the same ones that are gonna tell the individuals that lose their jobs at the city of Glendale that provide services to each and every one of you? Are they gonna say, oh, well, you know, it's for the benefit of the better, the people? It's not. When you start cutting, we're looking at building safety, we're looking at turnaround times for new businesses, going from two days to possibly two weeks. We're looking at people here from the arts. You won't have any arts program. And it's not that it's because it's the arts, it's because we're gonna eliminate the people that do that, and it's because it's core services. Do we wanna do it? No. Where are we gonna do it? No. The people that vote, wanna have the sales tax and repeal this, by the way, those are people from outside the city, along with, they even, they couldn't even get enough people to collect signatures, so they paid people to do it. They paid a company outside the city of Glendale to collect signatures. So don't think that this is something that is happening from the groundswell. If you polled any of the council members up here, the majority will tell you, we're not getting phone calls from angry constituents. We're getting phone calls, or hardly any. What we're doing is we're getting emails and said, hey, you know, we understand that in tough economic times, you know, dealing with, how should I say, complex issues over the past two or three years or longer, we had to make a decision. And we had to make a crucial decision. And that crucial decision is, we had to raise sales tax. And you know who told us that we had to do that? The city manager, the city, they said you have to do something to get funds. And that's what we did. So if you're upset with people, don't be upset with us. Be upset with the people that are trying to take your services away. And trust me, they will. And you know what? They won't care, because they don't live in your city.
Our job here today, you know, most of you have either attended or have watched city council meetings, and you know that I ask that you show your support by raising hands, or your disdain by doing this. But let us continue our meeting if you can. Our job here today, as distasteful as it may be, is to put this city in a position to implement a vote of the people that you have absolutely no idea how it's gonna turn out. None of us have any idea how it's gonna turn out. Our actions and our approach to this issue can have a huge impact on whether people vote for the initiative or vote against it. My belief is, our credibility is strained to the breaking point, to the point where facts, figures, data, doesn't really make any difference. People have just made up their mind what caused this problem. And so, you know, that, that's affecting how they may vote, starting October 11th and going until November the 6th. So our job is to be ready to implement what nobody wants to have happen. We have to do this because Mr. Skeet has started meeting with the bond rating agencies, because a key component of any of this is the restructuring of bond debt. If that doesn't happen, the numbers of, the amount of the cuts will go up quite a bit. But those bond rating agencies want to know that we are approaching this issue seriously, and taking steps to implement what nobody wants to have happen. So hopefully, we can spend the rest of this afternoon productively in listening to what our staff members, our department heads have come up with as the way that their departments can contribute to the loss of this, making up the loss of this revenue. Nobody wants to do it, nobody likes it. The fact of the matter is, we're here because we have to do it. And I firmly believe that our approach to the public will have a huge impact on their reaction to Proposition 457. So I hope we can continue to talk about these items. This is not final today, as I understand it, but if there are specific items that- that council members want removed from consideration, that staff will take that back and consider it. It may not be possible to do because the number is so huge that has to be made up. But would that be a fair assessment?
Mayor, Members of the Council, that's correct. Well, one of the things we hope to achieve as staff out of this is, we've done a two-weeks exercise that presents you with twenty million dollars worth of cuts. We don't assume to have all the answers, we don't assume to have gotten it right. If you, if there are things on here that you would like us to not consider as part of the cuts, we would like to hear from you so that we know to do whatever we can to try to protect those. Again, no guarantees that we could, we would be able to do that because in order to protect anything that is on this list, we have to give something else up.
Okay, I'm going to continue with the discussions that we've been having. I do not think it helps solve the problem to show transferring the C V B money out of the general fund to a fund that may not exist. I don't think that helps solve the problem. But getting to the special events and I think our business community has become aware that there are other communities of interest that are in huge lobbying campaigns and so they've started their own. So I would say that, and I'm going to read from, something that was sent from a business owner and resident of Glendale that I think describes this pretty well. Not all of the events, I do not support keeping all of the events, but I do support keeping the Glitters, Glitter and Glow and the Chocolate. And the reason is because those who have lived here before, many years, remember what downtown Glendale was like when there were no events to attract people down there. You remember the crime in the area because there was no reason for people to come down. You remember the shuttered buildings, you remember, you know that translates into lower property values. You know, this whole Coyotes thing, which whether it's, whether it's true or not, plays into people's decisions about four-fifty-seven is all about bringing tourism to Glendale. Downtown Glendale is about tourism, bringing tourism to Glendale. Tourism is a key business in this city. It didn't used to be twenty years ago, twenty-two years ago, when I came on the council, it wasn't a key business. Nobody wanted to come near this place. So we developed the festivals to bring people down here. And now they can, they can show the economic impact of doing that. But, you know, basically what this person wrote is, crime will come back. Anytime you have an area that is dark all the time, loss of businesses, loss of property tax, loss of revenue. I think we need to look at not cutting, not making cuts to those areas of the city that actually make us money. For several years, the last, what, two or three years, every time staff came with a budget for us to consider, they said, these are the revenue enhancements that we want to build in. And that was what, that was really what drove a lot of the decisions regarding cuts that were made in the past. Does this particular activity program department contribute to revenue? Vacant buildings are not going to help our redevelopment in any way, shape or form. Most of the people who come to downtown Glendale, just like go out to Western Glendale, are from outside the area, outside the city. So we're bringing in other people's money to support downtown. So I do not, I will not support keeping all of these, but the ones that have identified Glendale and bring millions of visitors each year and are our trademark. And that's the Glendale Glitters, the Glitter and Glow and the Chocolate Fair, I think, should be kept in because of the revenue they generate. Councilmember Canac.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to follow up on that a little bit. I had lunch with two of the business owners just today. They're at a point where I think a lot of them are realizing that they need to take this on themselves. Those festivals, I think, are about fifteen days out of the year. And the ones that I talked to today said that although they're wonderful, they enjoy them, it really doesn't make or break their business by any means because it's fifteen days out of the year. Now, those have been here a long time, we have a following, obviously. But I think that I would agree with Glitter and Glendale Glitters and the Chocolate Affair. I think those two especially. But I just think if we're going to cut, we need to cut and this is a worst-case scenario. But I think that the business owners downtown can take care of themselves a lot, too. And they have some good ideas about what they would like to do, even if there aren't events. I know Glendale Glitters, a lot of the businesses, they say that they don't get a lot of business at night because they're out in the, people are really out enjoying the lights and doing those things. So I think there's two sides to it, but I just want to say that I think the business owners down here are ready to accept some responsibility for their own businesses and they want them to run all year long, every day, every weekend, and not just those fifteen days of the events. So that's just a comment because I just talked to them today and I was glad to hear them accept some responsibility for their own businesses.
I've gotten five emails just in two hours saying that without the key events, not all the little thingies, but the major ones that have established Glendale as a destination, that's what makes sure that they are even going to break even and then profit on top comes after that and that's their responsibility.
Sounds like business owners out at Westgate.
And you know, and that's really what I said. I said, just like we are considering giving money to one business owner in Western Glendale, there are a lot of business owners who have invested their own money, bought buildings, renovated those buildings with their own money and turned them into businesses where we used to have a, really a deserted, not very attractive place. And long before there was a Westgate, long before there was a Coyotes hockey team, what put us on the map and brought people to Glendale really was the, really was the festivals in downtown. But there is so much more in these pages and we really need to move on because we do have a meeting tonight. So what other services programs, yes, Councilmember Clark?
Mayor, I had planned to say very little and I will be saying very little this afternoon. Because having reviewed these many pages, the reality of the situation is this. And these pages only reflect twenty-one-point-one corrected figure. Twenty-one-point-one million dollars worth of cuts. The reality is, forget the Coyotes situation. There are, there is twenty-four million dollars that must be eliminated from this budget. Twenty-four million dollars. And again, I say a couple of things. We lost state shared revenue over the past five years. We lost sales tax revenue. Expenses continue to go up, but we're doing it with less and less revenue. Five years ago, we should have been having this very same exercise, but we chose not to do that. We chose to rely upon a rainy day fund and make kinder and gentler cuts. There are no kinder or gentler cuts left. Everyone does not want their ox gored. I've heard from the arts people, the library people, parks and rec people. In great numbers, no. Many of the people in my district understand the necessity for the sales tax increase and do support it. But there is, nothing in this budget is sacred. And I hear people up here talking about saving the festivals or saving money for the convention bureau, or saving money for this or saving money for that. I look at these cuts and I say, these cuts will probably have to be adopted if the sales taxes repealed, plus another three or four million that we're not even talking about this afternoon. There is nothing left, folks. We are not bringing in enough revenue to meet expenses. There must be cuts. The city manager and every city department head looked at their budgets and said, if you're making us cut more, we'll cut because we understand that we have to. But these are the ramifications of those cuts. It is a diminishment of city services, it is the closure of libraries, it is the closure of the GRAS program, it is the closure of the Rose Lane Pool. It is the closure of many, many amenities that we all in the city of Glendale take for granted. But there is no option. And again, I say, don't lay this on the Coyotes because the city manager has given us different scenarios. And the scenario without the Coyotes remaining in this town is still a twenty-four million dollar deficit. So as much as I want to hear about, don't cut me, don't cut me, don't cut me, let's see if we can work together and figure out what we can do to dig ourselves back out of this twenty-four million dollar deficit. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Clark, you made some key points that I don't want to misstate your words, but basically, there are no options, this is the way it is. So I'm going to turn to the council, we're really not getting very far in this. We're, basically, the discussion has been that we should never be at this point and that everybody should vote against Proposition four-fifty-seven. And you've kind of laid it out that if not this, then what? There are no other choices. So I'm going to turn to the council and say, should we continue this exercise? Or should we just, because you're saying, you're saying, do not take anything off the table. Why, you can't fight for this or fight for that or whatever, so.
Mayor, may I respond, since you were responding to my comments? I believe that we need to continue for the, for the one very, very good reason. We all built this, and I know I built it, to the people in my district, as an opportunity to learn about the cuts that could be coming if the sales taxes repealed. And I believe that the public deserves to hear from the various department heads about that menu of cuts that are possible. And so, since this was built in as an informational meeting, to get that information out there to the general public, I believe it is critical that we do so.
I think that's a great idea. Can we do that and not argue about some past things? Yes, Councilmember Canac.
I'm in agreement and we're doing what we did during budget. We're starting to nitpick things again and that's not why we're here. And that's the whole point. Had we done this during budget and gone through all this, I think there would have been more understanding when the majority of this council passed that tax. That's why we passed it, is because of all this that's in front of us. So we're kind of doing it backwards. We're kind of, you know, explaining now. And I'm in agreement, I think we need everybody to have their opportunity to get up here and speak, every department that we have in here. And I think we need to keep our comments to a minimum and just take it all in and get an overview of this digested and have the public especially understand where we are. And I just hope people really listen.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I agree with what's been said, but I think that one good thing that's going to come out of this, at least the discussion that we've had so far, is that I hope people that are watching, people in attendance, people that have been reading the newspapers, can make a decision for themselves based on what you're hearing from staff today, that these are not scare tactics, that this is a reality that can happen if the tax increase is repealed. Thank you, Mayor.
Here.
Councilmember Lieberman.
First, I want to say that for the first time in a long time, I totally agree with Councilmember Clark. What she said is correct. We are, yes, there you go. Second, everybody seems to be talking about their position. I want to tell you mine. My position is from twenty-one and a half years as a merchant in Glendale with three fairly successful businesses. When I was in my motorcycle shop, and by the way, the Glendale City Fireman probably made up the single biggest customers I had, Red Lamb sold more bikes battalion commander for me than any one of my salesmen ever did. I discovered that people would actually go to Casa Grande to save fifty bucks. If I have to charge additional sales tax, seven-tenths of a percent to sell a product and I am no longer in the business, and I admit it, under five thousand dollars and they can go to Bell Road and beat my price by sixty-eight dollars, I can't stay in business. So I am here in a position of, do I want to lay any firemen off? No. Are we desperate? Yes. Do I want to lay any police off? No. Are we desperate? Yes. With the Coyotes, without the casino, I tried to tell you earlier, and Councilmember Clark did a better job, of the amount that we owe is stupendous. It's unbelievable, it's overwhelming, it's overbearing. I am trying in my position to protect the little merchant, not the so little merchant cabinet shop on Northern came to me, said my average kitchen overhaul is thirty-four hundred dollars. They can go to Peoria and save seven-tenths of a percent on an identical bid. So I am in favor of four-fifty-seven, is it, four-fifty-four? Simply because I am trying to protect the little merchants like me that have to exist in Glendale. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Okay, there's under communities, what is it, community services, under, is Public Works, are we there yet? Or is that, no?
We're still in community, yeah, Public Works is a part of it, you're correct.
Okay, under Public Works, I just want to point out, which I believe is something that all the districts suffer from, that's graffiti. And under this proposal, we eliminate one graffiti removal position, including the vehicles and supplies. And it says, reduction, will it adversely impact response to removing graffiti citywide from forty-eight hours to fourteen days? I can see what, in a matter of a month, city of Glendale won't look the way it looks today. So this is boiling down to, we're not eliminating it, but we're reducing it by half. So when you call in graffiti or you happen to see graffiti on your street, graffiti removals, forty-eight hours, that's pretty good. Sometimes it's sooner. So we will save money, but it'll go from forty-eight hours to two weeks. So I think that's one, one thing that I'm compassionate about throughout the city and my district. I think that's where citizens, it's one-hundred-seventy-three-thousand dollars a year, I think, between the employee and the expenses. And I'm sure there's a lot of expenses with all the graffiti removals. So that is one item that I would reconsider.
I think what I've heard the majority of you say is that you want the public to know the impact of the approval of the proposition. I think we're going, we're trying to agree, and then maybe we don't remember how to do it, that we're not going to be here trying to lobby or trying to persuade. We're trying to inform, is what Councilmember Clark said. And so people truly understand what's going on. And so I think, Mr. Skeet, that's going to require, and I think I heard people, some of you say, we're not going to try to take things off the table because that's what we did in the spring, which we did. We did take them off the table, couldn't do that. So this is going to require your staff to present things a little differently, maybe, than they plan because the initial introduction to community services was based on everybody having material to read. And I understand that. And then you said, do we have any questions or comments? So based on what I hear the council saying, I'm going to suggest the person who's speaking for the group goes into more detail as to what really the impact is to the community. And I think I'm hearing you say that we will just, we will sit and listen, be part of the information. Nope, not right?
No, that's right. I want to clarify. I think what need, what needs to happen is whoever gets up and speaks for that group has got to outline the cut. Tell us what the cut is. Tell us how many dollars it takes away, how many FTEs, how many employees get lost, and what the eventual outcome is to the general public. I think those are the three critical pieces of information. And I think if each group head will do that, we'll make it through all of this without extraneous comment from the seven of us up here.
Mayor members of the council, if I can speak to my staff a little bit here for a minute. What I would like for you to do, to communicate to the council and the, and the community and the audience, is basically, I would like for you to go through the high-level summary and put that slide up, and immediately go to the critical service impacts in each of the areas covered in your group. And then we can go from there and expand that critical service area if we need to. But I think you would have enough information to be able to speak to the council's needs right now, which is, give the overall impact for the group, the level of reductions in terms of dollars, and employees in that group. And then speak specifically to each of the service areas in that group, to one or two of the critical service reductions that will occur if these reductions are put in place. So if, I think that should give you enough information to have, to have the conversation that we need to have.
Yes. I think that would work, Mayor.
Welcome back, Mr. Kent.
Thank you. Mayor and council, with your indulgence, I will, I will trottle, follow Mr. Skeet's direction to the best of my ability, and I will call up, or, and certainly, council, if you have more specific questions I can't answer, I'll ask my, the other directors to respond to specific questions. I may have all the detail for. Going back to the sort of high-level piece, I'll focus, going in the book in order that you've got. So on page five, the first key service reductions in the Community Services Group include Community and Economic Development Departments. So I'll focus on some of those first. Some of the key reductions include, the building safety inspection times will increase from the current 24-hour turnaround to 48-hour turnaround. Plan review will increase from 20 working days to 30 working days. So that's really an increase of two weeks in terms of time. Responses to phone inquiries will increase from one-day turnaround to a three-day turnaround. And all phone calls will be answered essentially by an automated system to start, and then those calls will then be screened and then parsed out for the proper response by the appropriate staff member. The public request for mapping in the GIS system will potentially take twice as long as they current, as they currently do, as half the staff are being eliminated as a part of the reductions. And I'll focus finally on the Economic Development part, which is on page six at the top. The reduction in Economic Development will hamper business attraction, retention and expansion, broker and site selector outreach, and independent third-party verifications, which will result in reduced revenue generation by the city. Those are probably half or three-fourths of some of the items that are listed. I can certainly, Mayor and council, read them all, but I think focusing on some of the key highlights that may affect the public most directly is, is the direction that I believe I've heard. So with that, relative to those issues or anything else within, just starting with the Community and Economic Development Group, either myself or Mr. Friedman would be happy to respond to any questions. We'll move right along then. To Parks, Recreation, and Library Services, this is on page six of your book. This includes, as is highlighted on the top of the slide, the closure of two libraries, including both Velma Teague and Foothills Branch Libraries, and the Rose Lane Aquatic Center, and closing three of the GRASP sites, and delays in park maintenance.
How many employ, excuse me, Mayor, how many employees? If those two libraries are closed down, how many employees have we just laid off or will no longer have a job?
Let me get that for you, Mayor. Councilmember Clark? Mayor, Councilmember Clark, the total number of FTEs in the libraries that would be laid off would be 55.
It's a lot of people.
Yes.
Who depend upon, never mind, I'm not going to lie.
We're not going to.
That's right.
That's right. We're going to receive information.
That's right.
In addition to those reductions, I'd like to highlight just a little bit on, starting on pages nine and 10, a couple of the other key issues relative to some other maintenance issues that are highlighted in that. Talked about delayed parks maintenance. Some examples would include reduction in staffing for parks maintenance at Swar Branch Historic Area. The reduction represents a 50% reduction of parks maintenance staff for maintaining the entire 80 acres of the park. Will it adversely impact the appearance of the facility and the ability to generate revenue from park reservations? People that reserve the Ramadas, the ball fields, those sorts of things. Elimination of a staff position over at the Adult Center. The reduction will adversely impact the maintenance and repair of the Adult Center, as well as set up for special events, both at the Adult Center and within the amphitheater, because that position supports a variety of sort of internal functions, both the Adult Center and the amphitheater.
Mayor, I do have a direct question.
Councilmember Clark?
I know that we, we closed the two branch libraries. Is there any, has there been any consideration about closing the Adult Center? Because it does, I don't believe it pays for itself either. Has there been any thought about that?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I'll ask Mr. Strunk to respond to that specific question.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilmember Clark, the answer to that question is no, we have not considered that.
But yet, it costs us to operate that facility.
Earlier this spring, you provided direction that we capture 50% of the operating cost for that facility.
So it, currently, it's paying 50% of itself?
If the projections play out, yes. The answer to the question is yes.
Then I would respectfully suggest that we consider putting the closure of the Adult Center on the, on the table, since it is no longer, it does not pay for itself.
Mayor?
Just one moment. Would an alternative be to offer a model where it's 100% recovery?
Yes, that would be fine with me.
I would, 100% recovery, yes.
100% recovery or closure to match the revenue it produces?
Mayor, council, we will, we will work those numbers, and we can provide those numbers to you.
Is there a majority direction to, to look at that?
I think we have consensus.
Yes, we already raised the rates, as I understand it. And I believe I read somewhere in this first package that we got, where supervisory personnel one or more was going to be terminated at the Adult Center. So I think we are working toward bringing that to where it pays its own way. It may not do much more than that. But to make it self-sufficient would certainly be the goal. But I thought, in this particular instance, we did discuss that when we talked about the budget in March, because that's when the decision was made to raise the rates for membership in the Adult Center, if I remember correctly.
Mayor, Councilmember Lieberman, you do remember correctly, we reduced, eliminated two positions in the Adult Center, and we also had the direction by Mayor and council to get it to a 50% cost recovery. In addition to that, and what you're seeing here today, there is a position in the Adult Center that is slated for elimination, and it also received direction from you to entertain 100% cost recovery. We will work those numbers and present those, that scenario to you.
Just, just as a procedural question, I'll go back to Councilmember Clark initially. You said, close it entirely. What, what type of time parameters would you give to determine whether it could, can operate on 100% cost recovery? Because the costs continue all the while. Just go with the reduction that they're looking at now, and then set a time parameter for 100%?
I don't know, Mayor. I would have to, give it to the staff, because I would have to think about it.
May I comment on that?
Sure.
We are in an impossible situation today, because we know that three of us at least, if not more, but at least three of us will not be here 90 days from now. And we're the ones making decisions that will affect them. I'm not too sure that they may agree with all the decisions that we're making. And you may see a repeat of this very operation in January or February, simply because 40 to 50, and perhaps as many as 65% of us, will not be here after the second Tuesday in January. I just thought I, and that unfortunately also includes me, and I will miss you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kent, if you would continue, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, at the top of page seven, we've already covered some of the Communications Department relative to the special events. The other item that was highlighted, I mentioned earlier in my initial comments, and I'll reiterate now, is also not only the special events that we've talked about for a little bit, but also the elimination of the KGLN, Cable Channel 11, and essentially closing down that station. Are there any, if there are no other questions, I'll move along.
Yes, I read that before. Point out exactly where it says that.
I'm sorry. On page seven, Mayor, Councilmember Lieberman, the Communications Department's at the top of the page, the second, the third black bullet says, elimination of the city's television station and city website videos. And then references the service impacts, that the residents will essentially have no ability to view the city council meetings or workshops unless they're here in person.
Yes, I see it. You had said before, we're on pages 10 and 11, and that was my confusion.
No, we moved to seven.
I see it, I see it. Eliminate the city's television station, city website videos. I suggested that to you, as you recall, just Friday last week.
Mayor, thank you. Continuing halfway down on page seven, the Neighborhood and Human Services Department includes a number of reductions. First includes the elimination of one code compliance inspector position. We are suggesting the elimination of CAS funding, as well as potentially elimination of the YWCA Meals on Wheels program. We are suggesting with both of those, that council potentially direct the Community Development Advisory Commission to put those as a priority for CDBG funding directly, and fund those at 100%. So much like some of the conversation earlier, where there's been a transfer, the programs potentially could stay in place, but ultimately, we would ask council, either through now or ultimately during the CDAC annual sort of reviews you do, is direct them to have that, so that way those become a priority service relative to other issues.
That's good. I think that's really a good suggestion, and the, and we haven't put as much emphasis on giving direction to CDAC in the past couple of years as we used to. And so what you're saying is the most critical services, rather than spreading the money like peanut butter, really focus it where people are going to starve if they, if we don't direct funding there. I think that's an excellent suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and council, additionally, within the, excuse me, with the Neighborhood revitalization and housing areas, also going to be a change in related to maintenance and, of some of the appearance of the, of the city housing. Much of that involves the, the maintenance of the turf and the, and the sweeping of the parking lots related, and those residents, as well as those that live in the area, would see that impact. Are there any questions related to the Neighborhood and Community revitalization areas?
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in the, when we received materials, there was a section there on relocate community action program?
Yes.
And...
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, yes. And I'll, I'll direct the council, on page 11 of your book, there's detail that back, that goes back to some of the, to the page on page, excuse me, seven that I referenced, but page 11 specifically calls out the relocation of the community action program to space in the City Hall, thereby eliminating the rent payments and associated costs. We've identified space within City Hall where those activities, which for many years were in City Hall, would be relocated back to City Hall.
Excuse me.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
I don't know if this is part of your, your area, Mr. Kent, but my thought was, you know, we have the Bank of America building, and we have the Sign Building that is vacant. Has any thought been given to perhaps relocating some departments from Bank of America, freeing that space up, which was, I think, would be more attractive to business as opposed to the Sign Building? Any thought?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, there are, there are a number of options related. I'll touch on the B, the Bank of America building first. There is currently vacant space in that building, and we are currently continuing to work to look at the current city departments that are in that building, and potentially moving them into City Hall. Part of that will ultimately depend on how much reduction in force occurs within these reductions. And if that occurs, then reshifting some of the departments within the, within these cities, so we can consolidate space for a department or more to move back into City Hall, would be an option. Then that space would be available for rent. So that is one thing we're looking at. Relative to the Sign Hardware Building, I know you all had a presentation last week from Mr. Friedman, and I, I guess I would suggest that, continue to look at opportunities to, you know, you have that space used by a commercial user at this point, maybe a better and a higher use right now relative than to using it for city resources. The city was still on the building at this point, and ultimately, as times, as the community continues potentially to grow back cycle at some point, that might be an option, because we potentially still have control of the building.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
I would add to that, follow along with what Councilmember Martinez said. The B Museum building has Jive Mine at a greatly reduced rent, and I think that's something we need to take a look at as well. Ending our, our relationship with them and looking to get a commercial user into the B Museum.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, and we can certainly follow up on those uses and look at it. I guess the, the challenge of it right now is obviously the market relative to available office space in this valley, much less in the city of Glendale. There are a lot of spaces that are available. And so although the, the rent terms there may be different, Jive Mine brings a variety of other sort of programs, and Mr. Friedman can talk specifically about those. But I, I think our, our approach sort of looking at it, and because part of my responsibility includes the city buildings, is making sure we're getting the right value for each, each piece. Ultimately, if, if we released out of all our other downtown space, and that was the one that was getting under recovery, that might make sense. We have a lot of other space available in the downtown that may be available and in the community. But if you have specific questions about Jive Mine, I'd probably defer to Mr. Friedman.
Mayor, if I might. I would simply say, in keeping with nothing being off the table, that, that you may feel that it, it may not be attractive enough, and that there is too much commercial space available. But if you don't try, then nothing happens. And I think we're at the point where we need to, to look at everything and try everything.
Is there support for that particular idea? I, I'll just tell you, I'm getting a little uncomfortable talking about a tenant that we just entered into a lease with.
I know that, Mayor.
And we're talking here in a meeting about breaking a lease with this tenant, and I don't, I, is there support for going further with that idea?
No.
Yeah, I don't think you, you support it.
I support it.
There is not majority support for going further with that. However, I think the overall direction Councilmember Clark is trying to lead in is a good one, and that is, look at all leases, just as last week, we talked about that superb economic development opportunity we have, but it's for free rent and, or no rent, which, gosh, probably lots of people would like to put their businesses there. So I, I think her overall message is, relook at that. You know, just like you were talking about moving how, the CAP office, don't we have a lease there? I, I assume we're able to get out of the lease?
Mayor, Mayor members of the council, I think it's important that you, that you understand, during this process, no stone would be left downtown, and, and every opportunity will be reviewed and re-justified, reevaluated. If the rationale remains a solid, good business decision, we will bring those to you as to why we are keeping them the way they are. And if we suggest any changes, we will bring those to you as to why we should.
That's good. I think, does that make everybody comfortable, that direction? Thank you.
Mayor, with that, the, the last department within the Community Services Group is the Public Works Department. The highlighted summary of, of two of the surface impacts, one of which has already been talked about in terms of graffiti removal, is on page eight. The detail relative to the, all the cuts are on page 12. Focusing on page 12 briefly, we've already touched a little bit on the graffiti program. We would also be recommending reduction by half the staff at the city cemetery. We would also be eliminating the downtown patrol services, and by the non-sworn guards patrol through the downtown area, the annual power washing of the downtown sidewalks, and all downtown-specific advertising that has been normally called part of the downtown beautification program. Because it falls into a myriad of departments, marketing, Public Works, and others, it's been part of the Public Works budget for some time. But that's, that's part of that reduction. With that, Mayor and council, I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of those items.
Councilmember Clark?
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate location, but does the Operations Center fall under Public Works?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, it does.
All right. I know that, that the Operations Center really charges a great deal for oil changes and basic service to cars, especially for police vehicles. basic service to cars, especially for police vehicles. I believe the current bill to get a car serviced in the police department is around three-hundred dollars. And I know this has been brought up before, but I think it's worth it, and I think there might be support this time, to look at, this is going to scare a lot of people, closing the Operations Center and privatizing servicing of city vehicles. So I'm going to throw that one out on the table as well, to look at what can be done with the Operations Center in terms of closure, or limiting its scope of responsibility with regard to vehicles, and privatizing some of the work out.
I think we talked about that, and I really am not sure why we dropped it from budget discussions earlier this year. I can support looking at privatization, not closure. I don't know where we're going to take the garbage trucks and whatever for service, and I believe those are serviced there, too.
Well, I said, I said limited service could be an option as well.
So I'm not putting support for closing it, but yes, looking at.
Certainly.
Is there any other support, though? Because I'm looking for...
We supported that back during the budget.
Why didn't we drop it?
I don't know. We dropped a lot of things that we shouldn't have.
Instead of dropping it, put it up for lease and let a private enterprise take it over to its present position.
So what we're talking about is relooking at privatization of services that are done right now in the Operations Center.
In fleet maintenance. Yes, in fleet maintenance, I believe is what you're supposed, yes. We can, Mayor and Councilmember Clark, and we can certainly bring that back and evaluate that and provide some information.
What were we told, that it was going to be more expensive to do it?
Well, Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I guess, for everybody, I'll try to summarize the conversation I think we had last February, March, when I presented the topic and the question came up. There are a couple of issues. One, typically, our billing rates, per-hour billing rates, are typically less than most of the other dealerships, as well as specialty equipment shops. So whether it's garbage truck specialty shops, or a Sanderson Ford, or a San Chevrolet, or whatever, so much of which, warranty work, et cetera, all goes to them, and other work that we can't handle goes to those dealerships. We've worked very closely with, as example, the Police Department and the Fire Department and sanitation, probably our three biggest customers, to make sure we understand exactly what those vehicles require in terms of a maintenance program. In the example of, say, a police vehicle, while it's a standard, you know, Chevrolet four-door vehicle, because of the high-performance brakes, the high-performance tires, the lighting and the electrical demands on that system, we often have what's called a higher level of maintenance. So normally, in our personal vehicles, we might get a service oil change every five-thousand miles. We're typically doing a much more thorough evaluation every three-thousand miles on those vehicles. And we've had that conversation. But relative to privatization, relative to monitoring, providing a different service level to reduce the costs to all our users, we will, we have been and will continue to look at that.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Appreciate your openness.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Councilmember Clark?
I would simply say is, while I appreciate what you said, nothing is off the table. And it may be that privatizing at least part of the work is a better option for the city at this time.
Absolutely. Mayor, and Councilmember Clark, one thing, we probably, and I'll get the exact figure, we probably send out close to fifteen or twenty percent of our work anyway, because it's more specialized than what we have. But I fully, I understand the comments of the council, and we'll certainly evaluate that and bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Knack.
Along those lines, I'd actually like to hear from PD and Fire and what they think about that, because that would have an effect on them especially. So I'd like to hear if they think it's a possibility.
Mayor and Councilmember Knack, we can, I'd suggest we can either do that now, or if you want to have that conversation when police and fire present part of their reductions.
They can come, when they come up, it's fine.
Yeah, if they're prepared to, if you're prepared to offer those comments of, you know, today, not, I've heard informally, but if you're prepared to offer comments, and I think Chief Burdick's listening back there, if you're prepared to offer comments, that would be good. Okay.
Mayor and council, with that, that concludes the Community Services area.
Great.
And if that, then we'll move forward to Internal Services.
Okay.
A little break? No? He's going to.
Okay. Why don't we just take five minutes, only this time really mean five minutes? Because there's no sense in some of us being here and some of us not, okay? So meeting will be recessed for five minutes, and we'll just stay on the, up here.